Welcome to ZBA During COVID, everyone. And I will call the meeting to order for Wednesday, September 23rd. And I think we've got, we've got our forum, we've got everybody here. Tom, if you want to remind me, should we read in the public hearing, read it in? Or because we're videotaping, is that a little redundant?
Um, after inviting Rom up, you could read in the public notice to start the public hearing, and then we can go into the application as listed.
Okay, so I will invite Rom to serve as a full member tonight. And then Stephen, can I ask you to do the, uh, do the honors to read it in?
Sure, of course. Um, so we're ready for our first application, right?
Well, if you can just...
Go ahead.
Um, if we could just do the, the public, um, call for the, um, the applications on the agenda.
Right, the first one is application 20-12 of Jesus Cobal and Daniel Castle, applicants owners for variance of section three of the Simsbury zoning regulations to construct a garage addition on the property located at 298 Hop Meadow Street. The zone is R40.
And then just read the next application that we'll be hearing tonight.
Yep, the second application will be 20-13 of Guy and Francine, Kyle, Cassielo, Casselan, Casselina, I'm sorry, Guy. Applicants, applicants owners for variance of section three of the Simsbury zoning regulations to construct a front porch at the property located at 32 Arrowhead Drive. And that also is a zone R40.
Great. Um, and at this meeting, all interested persons will be heard. And, um, so we'll start off with application number 20-12. Um, who would like to speak? And if you guys can just introduce yourselves and, um, let us know about your application. Uh, not hearing ya.
Do you have your audio on, um, Dan and Jesus? We'll give them a moment.
I know, like I said, welcome to ZBA During COVID.
Um, gentlemen, uh, if need be, there is a dial-in number. Um, it should be listed on the agenda, uh, the 646 number. Uh, if you need it read out, it's, uh, it's 1-646-558-8655.
Right, can you hear us now?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, sorry about that.
Okay.
Uh, so we just, uh, purchased the property actually about a month or month and a half ago. And, um, something that we had been really ironing out is what we could do with the property before we, uh, invested in it. And, uh, a big portion of, actually most of the property is in the flood zone, which is unfortunate, um, but also good for us because then it couldn't be developed. Um, so we were able to, to make that hopefully our home in, in the near future. Um, so we would like to construct a garage. Um, the problem that we're finding is that anywhere else on the property other than in front of the house, uh, would be subject to the FEMA flood area. And then we would have to pay, um, the flood insurance, um, if they were connected to the house, and then also risk having the, the garage be flooded. Um, something that we found out is that the, the road was, um, kind of shifted. So we're at the, we're at like a corner, like a, uh, there used to be a much sharper corner in, uh, the road at Hop Meadow, but now they've kind of shifted it to, I guess, I think they were having a lot of accidents. And so the property line is a lot farther away from the road at the point of where we'd like to have the garage, um, than in other sections of the property. Um, and so it's putting us out of that, that, um, in the, in the range where we need to do a variance. Um, we have some documents that, that we created. I don't know if we can share that with you or not, um, do the share screen. Would you be interested in taking a look at it?
Sure. And are these ones that are part of our application or are these new?
Um, you know, there, there's some that are part and some that are, that are newer. We just wanted to create something to help us visually explain what we're looking to do, so.
Okay, so probably anything new that you present, we'll need to send to, normally what we would do if we were sitting, um, in town hall, we would, um, have you present that and I would enter it in and we would have it on file as a document. So, Tom, if, are you okay with that? That we would, we can review it here, but we'll need to have it on file for the record?
Um, yeah, if it becomes part of the record, I would just need a copy to put in the file as a...
We have a PDF that we can share with you.
Yeah, if you guys could email those over to me, um, you have my email address. After the meeting is fine, I will put it in the packet and we'll make sure that it's part of your application at that point in time so the public can review it at any point if there's an appeal.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
There we go. All right, can everyone see our screen now?
Yep.
All right, it seems to be a little bit slow, but, uh, so this is a close-up of the property, um, with the FEMA flood zone kind of over it. So the house is right here, um, in the location where we would like to put the garage is right here. Um, we want to put it here because we don't want to block the front of the house. It's an 1803 house and we'd like to maintain the integrity of, of what it, what it looks like from the outside without blocking it, so. Um, so the view of where we'd like to have the, the garage from the street is right here. So if you're driving, we just pulled these off of Google Maps. Um, if you're driving down the road, it would be kind of like right there. And then if you're right up to it, you actually wouldn't be able to see it because there's a, a large, uh, row of arbor byde that could kind of block it. Um, and then our neighbor next door, we have these hemlocks. Um, so it's kind of cradled, so it's, um, it's kind of unseen, uh, right now. So I did a little bit of Photoshop, I got a little creative. And, uh, so this is what it looks like without a, the garage. And this is what we're thinking it would look like with, as you're driving down the street. Um, so we've actually been out there with our neighbor. Uh, I don't know if you guys know David Fuller, he's a really nice guy. He comes over, he's retired in construction and we've been doing a lot of, of work to the house, so he comes over a lot. And so we've been kind of like putting flags in the ground and kind of showing it with them. So we, we ended up doing some, um, tape measuring and, and seeing exactly what the, the measurements were. Um, because we found that the map that we're, the drawing that we were going off of, um, from Town Records wasn't quite what we were seeing in person, um, which is actually a good thing because it's what, where we would like to put it is further away from the, the lines. Um, so this is, these are the distances. It would be about 40 feet from the road and 16 feet from, uh, our neighbor. Um, this is what it, this is what we'd like it to look like. This is what we've shown our contractor and what he's quoted out. Um, so, uh, three bays, pretty close to each other, um, and then connected and back to the house, um, with still kind of maintaining the look and feel of the old property. And then for the whole property, so we do have the barn there. Again, I've been doing some Photoshop work. Um, this is what it would look like without the, the barn. And this is kind of like an after picture of more of what we would like it to look like, um, after certain things are built. Uh, so this is what we, this is what we have, just the, the visuals to show everybody what we're looking for. Um, does anyone have any questions on what we presented?
Just one question, do, you don't have any garage at all right now?
No, there's no garage.
Okay.
And if you scroll back up to the top with a couple, um, or even from the, this one here. So if, if you were to shrink it to two cars, to a two-bay garage, how would that impact the variance that you would be requesting?
Um, it would probably reduce it to... It would probably save us about nine feet here.
And if we could just be clear too, so I might need your help on this, um, Tom. And I think this is something moving forward, we've talked about a little bit. It would be really nice if on the agenda for the applications, if it states really clearly, like the amount of the variance that's being requested. Um, so I think on one, on the... Cause I was saying 33 feet and 35 feet, then I was saying seven feet on both the front and the side.
In the, in the staff review, what, um, we have had is for an application is to encroach, um, 43 feet into the front yard setback, um, because it would be off of that yellow line in front of the road. Um, we're going off the, um, DOT plot plan that was secured when they did shift the road. And then on the south side of the house, which would be towards the bottom of that image, um, they're looking to encroach 33 feet at its greatest into the side yard setback. Um, that would be the corner to the east and south, closest to the house. That is the closest point to the southerly line, which is a 33-foot encroachment. So in the staff report, it reads, "The commission should explore the applicant's proposed hardship and determine the ruling of a variance of section 3.9 of the zoning regulations to encroach 43 feet into the front yard setback on the western side of the primary structure and encroach 33 feet at its greatest into the side yard setback on the southwestern side of the primary structure." More southeastern, but you get the point. And that would of course be reflected in the language of the variance if it is approved.
And so if we were to explore the idea of a, of a two-car garage, I mean, you know, it looks beautiful and, you know, I understand the value of needing additional space for more cars, but it is quite a large request for variance from, from both sides.
In running, in running with, um, the averages, um, there, the depth is not egregious. I believe they're looking for 30 by 40. Um, average depths are anywhere from 24 to 30 feet for, um, thinking of the, um, tail end of the vehicle to the front end of the vehicle, speaking of depth. And then typically anywhere from 24 to 30. Um, the average three-car garage could be 32 to 40 feet wide and they're on the 40 side. Um, an average two-car garage tends to be 24 to 30 feet wide. So with them speaking that a two-car garage would probably lose nine feet, um, I would agree with them that they're roughly going to lose about nine feet, making that projection into the front yard rather than a projection of a 43-foot encroachment that would get it to a 34-foot encroachment, taking off nine feet for a two-car garage. So if we were to request them to, um, weaver it to a two-car instead of a three-car, I think a nine-foot reduction would give them plenty of room to build a two-car garage. That's a discussion for the commission to have with the applicant.
Can I bring up one point of concern first though?
Yeah.
Um, if you go to Google Street View, there's a, um, why can't you share screen? Um, there's a telephone pole directly in front of where the garage is to be placed. That is the main feed for the house as well as a separate individual feed for the barn. And, um, our building laws preclude building anything under a main feed. So part of this whole, um, discussion is going to have to discuss how you're going to get power to your house as well as your barn because you can't have the power going over any structure. Doesn't matter whether it's a garage, a chicken coop, or, or anything. It's, um, has that been dealt with yet? Because that's a, a huge component.
Yeah, that was, that was something that was brought up, um, when we were showing contractors the overall plan of what we would like to do, just so that they could give us an idea of cost. And, um, yeah, that's, that's something where they said that they would recommend going into the garage rather than into the house, so have the power go that way and then, and then go into the house and have a main feed there.
And the barn, which looks like a separate lead, were you gonna jump it through the garage and then?
Actually, actually the barn, um, that, that pole only has a telephone wire. We thought it was electric too, um, but it turns out it's just a telephone wire because they used to have a business inside the, actually there's two telephone wires. They used to have a business inside the barn, um, apparently. And, and I guess that was their main phone line in. Um, there is power to the barn, but it's actually underground from the, from the home.
Okay.
And can you describe again how, um, the, the property line was shifted by the town? Is that right?
That, I think it was the, it's not the property line, it's the, um, the road. So if you see this right here, we're told that there was a really sharp curve right here in the past. And, and there, I guess these trees used to get, um, kind of run over a lot. And a few people, they told us died in the front yard on other trees. Um, I guess it used to be a big problem. Um, and, and that's why they didn't have a mailbox in the past because it used to get hit so often. Um, so, uh, I'm not sure when it happened, uh, because we're, we, we're not from Simsbury, but, uh, we're told that after it moved, they, they shifted it out to kind of, to straighten out the road so that there wasn't a, a sharp curve here. And so, um, as they did that, um, the, you know, if the road was more, it was closer, uh, you don't know that you can see my cursor, if the road was closer, um, you know, it, it was more aligned with, uh, what a normal property line would be from the road. Whereas now, since the road kind of shifted out for safety reasons, um, it, we were just, we were actually surprised when we were looking at it to see how far away the property line was from this portion of the road. Um, and it, and it was because the road had shifted.
Okay.
I, I don't think that changes your setbacks though, that's still the same property.
Right.
Right.
Have you considered, obviously, there's a, there's two other, uh, avenues that could be considered. One is to move your FEMA boundary, which you can petition them to move, the floodplain. That's not a, um, holier-than-thou item that can't be discussed. And for a reasonable amount of money, you, if you have a case that that land is not flooding, you can actually get that FEMA line moved. The second thing though is, has it been considered whether to put this in that area of the backyard behind the house? It, it looks like there's a lower section, um, but is there a way a garage could be incorporated there?
So we're, we're told that any part of the garage, even if it's just a corner that touches the, the FEMA flood area, um, it, it would be subject to the flood insurance and potentially flooding. And, um, neighbors have told us that the flood does actually get to this point. Uh, we, obviously not all the time, but that they have seen it and, and they have seen it across the road, um, pretty high. Um, so from what we're seeing just in person on, at the, when we're looking at it, I, I think that if FEMA were to come out to retrace it, might actually work against us. Um, because especially right here, it's a little bit low. Um, there, there are parts where we think it would probably get closer to the house and have less, I guess I'll say usable land that wouldn't be flood zone.
I think the way I see it is, um, definitely the, you know, being in a, in a floodplain is a hardship for this property. Um, not having a garage, um, I think particularly in, you know, New England winters and, you know, with climate change. I, I think that could, it can be a safety concern to not have a garage. I think there, you know, it's a totally reasonable use of a property. Um, and yet I struggle a little bit with just the, the size of the variance. It's, you know, it's, it's gonna be much closer to the front and side yards than the, you know, the town rate. That's why we have the, the regulations to keep that from happening. So would you, would you explore the idea of a, of a smaller variance with a two-car garage?
Yeah, we could explore that. Uh, we, we were hoping for the three-car because we have, we have the, um, farm truck and, um, after two, yeah, after two back surgeries, it's been a little bit harder to remove the snow, but, um, that's what, that's what we're hoping for the three-car. Um, and then trying to squish it as much as we could, um, to get it really small with not a whole lot of space in between the doors, but we could explore having, uh, just the two.
And is it, I mean, could it be placed in the barn?
Um, so the barn is actually gonna have, um, chickens inside. Um, that's, that's one of the things that really attracted us to, to that property.
But in theory, you could put a vehicle in there just for full, you know?
If we, if we took the siding off and kind of structured, if we... In theory, if we demoed part of the historic barn, we, we could kind of turn it into a garage, but, um, not very easily, I guess I should say.
There's no barn doors on your barn?
No.
That's unique.
Yeah, they have like a, they used to use it for horses and, and they have one door in the back, um, where they would bring it in and out. It's not a barn door though, it's like a regular two-and-a-half-foot door or so.
Are there other questions from other commissioners?
Yeah, I was about to ask the same thing. Can we go with, uh, you know, exploring two-car garages instead of three-car garages so that the variance can be reduced?
I agree, I think. Out of curiosity, are you guys connecting the garage? I thought maybe it looked like you were connecting the garage to the home.
Yeah, um, right here, by a small, kind of like a small square, uh, piece right here.
It's, it, it's just me, but it's, it's like, it, it's convenient that FEMA put the, um, you know, the line exactly where the homes are.
That's what we were thinking too, and that's why we're saying we don't, we, we don't want to, again, what we see in person, this doesn't make sense with what this is. And, um, we definitely think that it would work against us if they came out and remapped it.
Honestly, FEMA usually follows a gradient, so if you backfilled it and changed the elevation of the land, that is what would change your floodplain. It's not necessarily the area, although sometimes it is. The higher variable that affects a FEMA map is gonna be the elevation and the gradient of the land. So that's why I was saying you can change the land, you can bring it up and out of the floodplain. I don't know whether it's one foot below the line. Um, honestly, it can be as little as one inch below the line and that's when it's reasonable to bring in some topsoil. I, I don't know the gradients right there, but that would expand your whole backyard for, and, um, I don't know if that would be better for you or if you're hard set on having the garage in the front yard. But that's just another direction.
Yeah, we, we looked at, um, the ability to build on flood zone. Um, and we're told that it's, it's possible. It, but whatever displacement we have to the flood zone needs to be made up somehow on the property. Um, and at least for this structure to not be in the flood zone in the back, um, we would have to figure out a way of displacing water somewhere else, um, significantly in order to do that. And, um, I just don't know that it's possible with, with this, um, because there's...
I respectfully disagree with that.
Yeah.
Um, you're mixing up a floodplain and a conservation type easement. Uh, a floodplain is just a floodplain, it's where the water goes. It's not like a wildlife corridor, it just means the elevation doesn't keep the water from flowing on it. If there's an easement on the land, that's different. And you have to maintain your percentage, if you will, that is there for the wildlife or fowl or whatever it is, but a floodplain is a little different.
No, it's, it's actually so that if, if we were to displace that and to just fill here, it would affect our neighbors. And it would affect where the water, so if we're displacing that water and pushing it away, it means that neighbors potentially could flood more. So, um, I, so what it is, is so that we're not, um, disrupting their floodline.
Yeah, and we were told that it applies to all floodplain, um, no matter what category it is. It's the storage compensation, I think it's called.
Do you mind if I ask who told you that information, just for my own knowledge?
It was from the town, I don't know, I've talked to several people in town. I don't know exactly if it was talking to Tom. Tom, maybe it was you, I can't remember.
Um, I know your beer, your base flood elevation is 162 and your land in that area is just below it. Um, I'm not the certified floodplain manager for the town.
Would it be Mike Liddon?
And there are some caveats for compensatory storage. Um, I would have to rely on his, um, knowledge of those regulations. And our, I do know our regulations do read that any structure needs to have two feet of freeboard. So Steve, in regards to the height above that base flood elevation, it would be two feet above. Um, I don't know the elevation directly in that area. And, um, as far as the compensatory storage for filling versus, um, um, giving volume back at a net zero to can, can, to hold that, uh, floodplain, um, I don't know what our regs are on that. Mike Liddon is our certified floodplain manager and would be the one to disseminate that detail in exact language.
Yeah, it could be done by excavation. You know, I mean, you, you pull from Peter to PayPal, so you got a hole, you got the fill from, and then you move it around and it's, it's just a way to approach it. I think we're getting off task here. Uh, you're asking for this to be here and a variance for it to be here. I didn't mean to drag, uh, to drag us down this side note. It's just part of our purview is to make sure you've researched all other alternatives to a, um, a, you know, a, a, an appeal, basically, to the existing regs. All right, Katie, take up room.
I don't, I don't think that's a sidebar at all. I think this is exactly our job, you know? I really do think that, I think, you know, if this is a two-foot variance, you know, to me, we say this is, you know, to use your property well. This is a pretty large variance. Um, and there are potentially other, uh, areas to put it. And I think it could make sense, I'm wondering, um, I know you're probably excited to move forward with this, but I think getting a little bit more guidance, maybe from Mike Liddon specifically, because this is unique with the, with the floodplain, to explore the options. And if he comes back and says like, there's just no, like, that's gonna be out of the question, that's gonna be too much of a hardship in other directions, then I think that would be important for us to know and that would lend weight to keeping it in this position. But I think maybe gathering a little bit more data to see could, if, if it was placed on the other side of the house, I don't really know that you'd need to come before us much. And if, if you want to keep it here, I think even exploring, um, and having the specifics, if it was gonna be a two-car garage, to know, you know, let's be clear, is it nine foot shorter? I think that's the way that I would be leaning at this point. I just, I don't think as this stands here that I would be moving in favor of this. So I'm curious what other commissioners are thinking.
If I may, just as an advisory schedule, prior to, um, any closing of the hearing and, um, deliberation, um, under state statute, you're on the 653565 clock. um, under state statute, you're on the sixty-five, thirty-five, sixty-five clock. This, uh, meeting has been opened on time. You can table it for further review for, um, more details and more discussion at the next meeting to meet, meet your sixty-five day deadline for a decision. With the ability of the applicant to give you up to another sixty-five days if need be. So if you do have questions that do need answers, you can request that, um, that we re, um, we revisit this. Um, there are, there's been some heavy discussion. I know we've gone in a lot of different directions. If you feel the need for more detail and the applicant to do more research, um, you, I just wanted to advise you, you do have time and it is an option. I don't mean to, um, negate, um, the presentation of the applicant, but that is a right of the commission and I just need to let you know that you have that option. And if you need further deliberations as far as getting more information, it is an option that you may want to explore.
Yeah, that's helpful. So that would mean there's no prejudice. We just, we table it and we, um, say, you know, let's gather more information and we would reconvene probably at the next month. Meaning if you were able to gather the information by then.
That would be correct.
Other thoughts?
Can we get an accurate site plan too, um, that is like filed with the town? I'm sure we have, or should we pull it off the GIS?
Um, the site plan should have been part of the packet. It's a DOT site plan. The top, that is the state code.
Tom, are you freezing?
I know, I think so.
Now, what I meant, I'll, I'll still talk. You know, it, it's hard even on the site plan that was included to actually designate where the boundary is. It, I think it's along the hedgerow as it's shown.
Mm-hmm.
Just to, you know, if we could just have that as, just see where the setbacks are for crying out loud. That's a, that's really it. I just think, you know, I, I'd like a little more of a black and white of where it falls, you know? Technically with this PowerPoint presentation, it doesn't even fall into the setbacks. And the other one says it goes thirty-three feet into the setback. So it's a,
Yeah.
It's a little bit concerning as far as how much is left as a plus or minus.
Right. So Jesus and Dan, do you feel comfortable with that?
With, um, tabling it for now?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, do we have our recourse?
I mean, we, we did talk with Mike Liddon quite a bit about the flood zone, not just about this, but also when we were, um, thinking about purchasing the property, um, we were also hoping to maybe use, um, it for another structure for chickens and, uh, we just, we went against it based on everything that he was saying as far as what we needed to do in order to build on a flood zone. Um, so we, we have gone into that. Sorry, we didn't bring up that status here. Um, and, and the map, um, should be included on that, that application. So, um, we were hoping to, to be able to move forward, but it sounds like, uh, there's a lot of apprehension. So maybe it is a good idea to move to table it for now. Um, is there anything else specifically, um, that we can research? Cause I don't, other than nine feet shorter, I don't think we're gonna find any more specific information on a two-car garage versus a three-car.
Oh, Pete, I think you muted. Yep.
Um, well, at least I didn't make any weird noises while I was muted. Um, is, if you negated the walkthrough, which looks nice where it doesn't actually touch the garage in the house, would that get you an additional, I'm guessing forty-eight inches or more, um, away from the setbacks just to try and minimize, you know, that's what we're gonna go after as my understanding is minimizing
Yeah.
any, any change. And that would be, that's four feet right there. So, uh, I don't know. That's just like you said, what can you consider? That's something else you might be able to consider. The, the less of a deviation you're asked, asking for is the more likely you can achieve it.
Trying to get in, um, the, we could move the structure closer, but we wouldn't be able to, I don't know that it would make the structure much smaller, only because it would get very difficult to park a garage that close to the, like get into this property to park it in front of the, um, the house here. I don't know if you could, yeah, you can see it. Um, so we can, we can shift it this way, but we, at least where we marked it out on the property when we were there, uh, anything closer would be almost impossible to drive a car inside, um, with where we have everything mapped out.
Well, I guess what we're thinking, maybe, or what I'm thinking is, you know, usually you have an attached garage. Right? So it's physically attached to the garage and then you have access from the garage into the house. I just, you know, instead of having a separate four-foot walkway between the garage and the house, if there's a way to consolidate that, condense that, um, and I think, you know, we try to be really reasonable. And I think we try to accommodate, you know, a good, proper use of your, you know, so you can enjoy the property within reason. So if, you know, maybe there's, there's a way that we can, um, find some middle ground.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, no, we're definitely open to, to moving that. Um, again, we would just, if, we couldn't, um, reduce the whole, um, space. I think that's what Dan's trying to say, just because there, the, there's a front door there, um, that we, we also wanna be able to use, that, you know, go straight out, out into the, the front yard. So we would need a little bit of space so that that door is usable and so that we can drive into the garage. But we could definitely remove that side entrance. It would just wouldn't be the, the whole, um, space that it occupies or that it would occupy. I don't know if that makes sense. But we're, yeah, definitely open to, to exploring that for sure.
Um, any other thoughts from other commissioners? Okay, so I think what we should do is we will, we'll table this. Um, and then you can work with town and provide some additional information. And like I said, you, you know, basically the application remains open. We have time where you can present some new information without having to like pay an additional application fee.
And so this new app, like, well, not new application, but like the new documents that we submit, would it be a revised plan with a two-car garage and a reduction of that side connector? Is that what, what you're suggesting?
I think that would be helpful and maybe just again, you know, if you, if you talk with Mike and just confirm, you know, i- is, is there any possibility to put it on the other side of the house as Steve was talking about? You know, what implications that might have for the floodplain? Is there a way, you know, this is gonna be a big addition. You're putting in a big investment, you know, is there grading that could happen to reduce the floodplain and move it on the other side where you don't even need a variance?
Mm-hmm.
Just, I think just explore the options.
The, so we did look into that, um, and bes- besides the, like, the, the, the problems that it, um, you know, like in the additional investment of, of grading and all that stuff, but, um, part of the, the beauty of the property is the view that it has from the back of the house. And if we built something there, we lose a lot of it because we would basically be like tight, very tight between the, the garage structure that we would build and where the barn is. Um, and what we will be able to, to appreciate some of it. It loses some of the, the, the feel of the house that we would like to preserve. So,
Right.
it's a viable option, but like the ones, the one that we're, like, it, it's not something that we just came up with. We've, we've been doing a lot of research on it. Thought through every possible implication and we strongly prefer to put it where it is right now. So, we understand that there are limits to the, to the setbacks and like, you know, we'll comply with whatever it is that you decide that we should do based on what's best for the town as well. But, um, the other options are just not viable for the project as we see it.
Well, and I, I actually, I don't think it is a viable option based on the discussions with, with Mike Liddon. Um, so it, it doesn't seem like the discussions we've had with him are, are enough. I've had a hard time getting an email response from Mike. He was great before COVID and during COVID, he's been a little bit tough, um, to, to get that. Do you need something in writing from him? Um, cause I don't-
Yes, um, as, as the liaison for the, um, and the staff for this commission, I will try to facilitate, um, some response from Mike and some discussion with Mike. And what you'll want is to finally get something in writing so that, um, it is stated what the options are or are not and what the, uh, reasoning behind those findings are. So we will, uh, try to facilitate that for you as, uh, much as we possibly can. And obviously I'll be that facilitator for you and we'll try to, um, get you, uh, all not in the same room, so to speak, but you understand what I'm saying. We gotta get you all on board in the same room and then you can, um, move forward at the next meeting with all the information that's been requested and, um, all the proper documentation that you have.
Thank you. I appreciate that. On the phone, he's been awesome, by the way. I, I wanna say that everyone that we've talked to, we've called a lot of different departments about different things and everyone's been so great, very helpful.
Good. Yeah, well, that's, that's good to hear. Yeah. All right. So we're gonna go-
Katie, you're just gonna have to hold, yeah, you're just gonna have to hold the vote to table it to the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay. So, um, can I hear a motion to table, um, application twenty dash twelve?
I'll, I'll start since I spoke out. I'd like to make a motion to, um, table application twenty dash twelve, um, in the hopes that we could understand further, um, alternatives in the form of moving the structure, reducing the size of the structure, or moving it somewhere in an area of an adjusted floodplain zone. Does that cover it?
That sounds good. And can I hear of a second?
Can I second?
A second.
Thank you, Ron.
I'll pick one.
Note that for the record. Um, all of us in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Um, excellent. Okay, so we'll table this and, um, we'll look forward to hearing from you hopefully next month.
We'll be in contact.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. So moving right along, we are gonna hear a next application twenty dash thirteen of Guy and Francine Casalino, who would like to speak?
Uh, I'll speak. Hi, this is Guy Casalino, uh, thirty-two Arrowhead. And basically we're look-
It muted you for some reason.
You're muted, Guy. Mm-hmm. There you go.
Is that better?
Yep.
Okay. Apologies. Um, basically we're looking to put a eight-foot covered front porch, the length of the front of the house. Um, based on the original plot plan, uh, that's on record with the town, um, the eight-foot encroaches four feet into the setback that's, uh, on the original plan. Um, going through and looking and measuring the, the outer property uh, boundaries and not the location of the house, that the line gen- looks like it goes to the front, to the road, which is actually sixty-seven feet from the house. So we're just looking to go based on the original drawing, uh, and a variance into the four feet into the setback.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Um, and can you tell us a little bit about, um, the hardship that you have of how you can't place a front porch someplace else?
Um, it's a, it's a, it's a front porch.
That's a good one, Katie. I like that.
Right? Like that?
No trick questions.
Yeah, and, um, I guess I'll, um, share as part of the application, uh, we have a nice letter from the abutting neighbors. We understand that Guy and Francine Casalino at thirty-two Arrowhead Drive are applying for a variance to add a covered front porch to their residence. The plot plan, which includes the details for the location of the eight-by-forty-one foot porch addition was made available for review. We have no objections to the proposed addition. We hope this letter helps the board quickly approve the setback variance so this project can proceed. Um, and it was signed by, um, Gail Mason at two-seventy West Mountain Road, Ken Matthews at two-sixty-one West Mountain Road, Nita Kutsukos at two-fifty-eight West Mountain Road, Marco Lamage from thirty-one Arrowhead Drive, and Margaret Glick at thirty Arrowhead Drive. So are those pretty much all your neighbors around the property?
That's pretty much it.
Hmm. Um, okay.
Any other questions on?
Yeah, uh, questions from the team?
The depth is gonna be eight fit, eight feet. Is that right?
Yes.
That's sort of the minimum, I assume, for a porch?
That's a, a stand, a standard size to allow, um, seating on the front porch.
Okay. And is that, does that include this? No, you have a, a railing. It just answered my own question. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Yeah, the railing for, for safety issues. Um, are there other porches in your immediate neighborhood?
Um, we are the only Cape style house on the street. Uh, most are Colonials with no front porch.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. It seems pretty straightforward, um, other comments from the, from the group, Mark?
I don't, I, it, yeah, I agree with you. It seems very straightforward. Um, seems like they have neighbor support and, uh, could be a nice little addition to the home.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I'd just like to confirm the, the one owner that you didn't get a signature from, you have noted here, is the twenty-eight Arrowhead. That's not an immediate neighborhood. That's one over?
Right, it's two houses down.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But I think that the back property, there's a corner that's probably within a certain distance of theirs.
Mm-hmm. Um, sometimes when we think of, you know, hardship, um, you know, things to consider in terms of safety, would you consider, you know, having a front porch, any safety considerations for you?
No, not that I'm, not that I know of. I mean, as far as, you mean-
Like that it might improve the safety of like not being out in the elements if you have a front porch that might make it easier to, you know, be going in and out of the home?
Yes, yes. And for people coming up to the house, um, it would, it would be, you know, obviously a little closer than, you know, for them to walk underneath the covered area to get to, uh, to get to the front door.
Mm-hmm. And so Tom, just to confirm, this is a four-foot variance that we're looking for here?
Um, let me review for one second. Um, this is going to encroach four feet into the fifty-foot set, front yard setback.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And then Guy, you have two front yard setbacks, right? You only have two side yard and two front yard?
Well, the, the other front yard would be considered West Mountain, correct?
Right, but it's an additional hardship that you have two front yards to deal with.
Yeah, I guess so.
It is.
He, his, um,
It is, yes.
There are lots.
Yeah, that, that, yeah.
There will be no encroachment into the other front yard, just as a matter of fact.
Correct.
Right, right. Okay.
I'll just say that he's not asking for more than an eight-foot porch. An eight-foot porch is about as narrow as I think you would make one to have it be useful. So he's not pushing it and asking for more than that, which is appreciated.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions, comments? Okay, Guy, any last words?
Uh, no, thank you for, uh, exposing me to this whole proceeding, in the process.
So what we're gonna do now is I'm gonna, um, close the hearing. So at this point, Guy, I'm not gonna be able to hear anymore from you. And, um, I'm gonna ask for a motion on this application.
I can make a motion.
Oh, Joanne though, yeah, go ahead.
So I make a motion that we close the hearing, right? That we close the hearing. And for application twenty dash thirteen of Guy and Francine Casalino, we're gonna do the whole thing. Um, applicants, owners of a variance of section three of the Simsbury zoning regs to construct a front porch at the property located at thirty-two Arrowhead Drive, Zone R forty, they're seeking a four-foot front yard variance.
Great. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and now we will deliberate. Any other deliberations, thoughts? I think it's a pretty reasonable use of a property, it's a front porch. I think um certainly in the elements, it's kind of a nice safety feature of having a front porch, kind of like having a garage, it's a, it's a good thing to have on a property. Um, the neighbors are in favor and that always lends weight.
They've asked for a minimum
I agree.
A minimum size variance for the, to make a useful front porch.
Great. All right, everybody ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Uh, the application is approved. So, um.
Thank you very much.
You'll get, yeah, thank you for spending your Wednesday night with us and um you'll be in touch with the town and they'll get you set up with um next step.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Great. And Dan and Jesus, you're welcome to hang on with us or you're free to go for the evening and we'll hear back from you. Um, could I, we've got minutes, I was not at the last meeting, cause it was my anniversary, but I read through the very extensive, can I? Um, I read through the very extensive, comprehensive minutes. Oh, yeah, Guy, go ahead.
Okay, I'm I'm all set to go as well?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Yep.
Have a good night.
Be in touch.
Yeah, you too. I still badly, I didn't, I I don't know if if Dan and Jesus thought that they needed to stay on longer, but, well, they had a few minutes, they got to hear.
It was short, at least.
It was. Um, could I get a motion for the approval of minutes?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the August twenty-six, twenty-twenty meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
All those in favor? Great, thank you, Pete. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great, minutes are approved. Any other zoning-related business thoughts, comments anybody has?
No, just underscoring that first application, having a uh visual site plan would have been you know, easier, I don't know if, is Tom still on the phone?
There was, there's something on one of the files, did you see the one at the very bottom?
I did, but it doesn't have like a drawn line.
Well, there's one of the, this one at the bottom has a, has like a, did you see that? Oh, you can't, probably can't see that. It's got like a, the orange building with the blue building next to it, and there's a red drawn
This one?
Line.
Yeah, well, actually, the close-up, Katie.
Look at the close-up of that.
The close-up.
I'm sorry, I, I
And you can see the red line on it, running kind of
So is that What are we discussing?
I just
Yeah, guys, we really
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Can't talk about it.
Oh, whoa, whoa.
We can't talk about it.
I, I, hold on, I froze up, I was off, what are we talking about right now?
Just having a site plan next time, that shows the property line, but they showed me where there is a site plan with the property line.
Let's hold
We're not, we're not deliberating.
Okay.
We're not deliberating on it.
In the open air, please.
That's right, yeah, we're not deliberating on it.
Okay, I froze up, I didn't know, I just walked into that, I almost lost it.
So anyways, I wasn't really talking about the specific property, what I was talking about was a more general term. If when we have a property presented, if the setback lines could be shown on a official map, whether it be any of our applicants, it would be really beneficial to us to have it black and white.
The applicant was advised that a survey would be in their best interest.
Okay.
Now, that cost can be not taken into account, but I'm not gonna discuss the details of the case in front of them. The advices, all advisories were made and it is what it is at this point, if they'd like to provide information to the commission, they can.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't talking about this one, we're talking about
I'm just trying to be very careful. Just being careful.
Yeah, and and Tom, I'm gonna reiterate too for the um applicant, some of this, I totally understand. It's really hard doing all this virtually, I think for all of us, I think, and I can only appreciate and imagine what it must be like doing this virtually of getting applicants and trying to to deal with paperwork. But um as best we can on the applications itself, it really should say how much the variance is for that, uh you know, I find as I'm digging through the various pieces of documents the last few months of looking through it, I'm kind of doing guesswork and like it's, it's hidden in there a little bit, but I think it should just be really clear, so when we call it out, like somebody makes a motion, they can read it, right, the application is stating this variance is for X and therefore I'm making a motion to approve a X-foot variance.
We, we provide
So we don't have to do any, so we don't have to do any math during the meeting.
We provide what the applicant provides, I can't make them get any more detailed what they want, but that's why we provide the staff report and try to spell that out in there, of exactly what they're looking for. The staff report in the last paragraph always spells out what variance distances they're looking for.
Um, but I think, yeah.
And we try to do that.
Okay.
I, we've been trying to write motions in detail, this meeting, unfortunately, due to staff time, was not available to do direct uh motions for you, but the staff reports do try to spell that out in the um final paragraph, so you know that it's a thirty-five-foot variance, a four-foot variance, a six-inch variance. We try to do that wherever we can. I understand that that might not have been as clear as it could have been in this, but when it comes to what the applicant provides, I can't doctor what they provide, I can't make them spell it out, it's requested. Their hardships sometimes get very wonky and very weird, cause they don't understand it, even though the definition is in the application of what a hardship is.
Uh-huh. Yeah, I'm looking at the way they wrote theirs, and the question on the form says, describe the nature of your application, including the amount of variance requested, and they didn't really ever answer that question.
And I can't
Well, and, and we don't wanna, we don't wanna deliberate on this specific one, but I think, I think that's where like, they don't just show up and and fill out an application and and submit it to the town, usually it's after multiple conversations. True?
Yes, and and I do, I do try to give them guidance as far as the town employee would go, and we had many of these discussions, I guided them to Michael about being a certified floodplain manager. We discussed about the, their encroachments, I told them what their math was, because not everybody has a scale ruler at home, so I tried to help them out with giving the variance distances and all that. So all the information I try to convey, and a lot of it is an email, so it's not something they'll miss, but in regards to them spelling it out on the application, I just can't doctor their application to put it in there, that's why we have staff report.
Can I ask one question about the application in particular? Um, just looking
Uh, well, we have to be, Steve, we have to be really careful, cause we've, we've already
No, it's not about anyone's application, it's about a application process.
Okay.
Gotcha.
It says that they should include a list of names and addresses of all abutting property owners. Do you contact those property owners, Tom?
Um, I would have to talk
Would you like me to speak to this one? Cause that's actually what I do. Um, everyone gets a mailing that's in a butter's. So I take their list and then I turn around and I pull up my own list to cross-check it, and everyone gets mailing no less than ten days. So I think it actually said it in the staff reports today, that there's the chief public domain notices that are in the Hartford Current, the dates of publication, and then that the butter's notice was mailed out on, I think it was September second, if I remember correctly off the top of my head.
Oh, you're correct.
Okay, it just seems like Noah Butters ever show up, but I guess that's good.
That happens, yeah, and I think a lot of times applicants will go out of their way to talk with their neighbors and craft a letter and say, this is exactly what I'm doing and it's gonna help me when I go to the ZBA, if you can sign this letter, and they, they do that extra step, but some applicants don't and none of the neighbors, you know, come, it's it's kind of a mix, you know, like we sometimes will have a neighbor, sometimes it's four, sometimes it's against, sometimes they're just curious.
It might depend on how neighborly they are with their neighbors, that, that, you know, how much they're willing to approach people.
It's not uncommon that I get called in the office asking what the actual application is about. So I'll talk to them and explain it, and it's attached to the agenda, so actually, right now, everyone can see a copy of the application. It's actually part of the agenda that's filed on the town's webpage. So I have them look at that as well, so a lot of times after looking at it, they're not that interested.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The only, the, the only neighbor that talked about any of the applications tonight didn't realize it was the person across the street, they thought it was the person next door to them. And as soon as they heard the address and what the application was, they had no concerns, didn't wanna deal with it at all.
Okay.
And are they still required to post a sign in their yard?
ZBA at this point, I don't believe we're posting signs.
Currently, due to COVID, I'm sorry, Tom, I'm not trying to interrupt you. Currently, due to COVID restrictions, we actually, and town hall not being open, the executive order from the governor doesn't allow us to give them the signs to post it, so it's not required right now, when we go back to soft openings and when we kind of work this out a little bit better, they're gonna have to post a sign again, but right now, the governor's waived all of the signposting restrictions due to executive
Okay. Yeah, cause that's also a nice thing, is just, you know, you're walking in your neighborhood and you see a sign that says, this property is, you know, had filed an application with the town zoning regs. As a, as a curious neighbor, you might knock on their door and say, what's up? But not during COVID. Okay. Any other?
Oh, can you, can you please, um, because I was frozen, can someone please refresh my my lack of information on who approved the minute, who made the motion and who seconded?
Mm-hmm, I think I made the motion, right?
Okay.
And I think it
Steven, did you second it?
Who seconded it? Seconded it.
We'll say she seconded it, it's okay, and I, I would have, I think it was unanimous.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's just for what I have to file tomorrow.
Totally. Yep.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Yay.